A public meeting of the Gardner Planning Board will begin by the announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Development and Planning pursuant to the open meeting and public records law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is there anyone in here tonight recording who needs to make themselves present to the chair? Very well, hearing none, we'll move on to reading the public meeting notice into the record. In accordance with the City of Gardner's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and Mass General Law Chapter forty-one subdivision legislation, notice is hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct a public meeting on Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. in the Hubbard Conference Room, two oh three City Hall, Manca Annex, Pleasant Street, Gardner, to consider the application for the preliminary plan for subdivision submitted by Joanne Tavano, Box two forty-four, Westminster, Mass. The preliminary plan depicts a proposed traditional sixteen-lot subdivision located off of West Broadway and Gardner. The development will be located in the general residential three zoning district and will consist of sixteen two-family dwellings. The development will consist of six point six acres of developed land and will keep ten point one acres undeveloped for open space area. The plans are also available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning, Room two oh one, City Hall Annex. All persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate. All right, very good. Any preliminaries for us, Mr. Beauregard, before we call up our presenter? Very well, I presume Mr. Fletcher is presenting tonight?
Yeah.
Welcome back, Mr. Fletcher, and of course, your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Trevor Fletcher with Grass Engineering, Civil Engineering, Birmingham Projects.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so most of you are aware of this site. A few months ago, we had a site plan, a multifamily residential development before the board, and there was some back and forth on some issues about parking and everything like that, and because we couldn't really get the type of development we were going for, it was going to require too much pavement in the back, and the applicant didn't really like the way that was going to turn out, so we re-looked at our options and wanted to see what all alternatives could be, and we decided to look into doing a definitive subdivision, traditional subdivision. The lot is located in the GR three, so two-family residential is allowable use in that zoning district, and the lot size is eight thousand square feet and requires, I believe, a hundred feet of frontage. And so we kept the access road that was for the former development, and we shifted it over slightly just to fit the lots a little bit better centered on the lot, and we were able to get sixteen lots out there, and the maximum road length in Gardner is nine hundred feet, and we are exactly at nine hundred with the end of the cul-de-sac in that location. We kind of kept, this is just a preliminary, so stormwater wasn't entirely necessary for the submittal, but since we had it for the other one, I just kind of showed it on there. We're just going to keep the stormwater pretty much the same, two basins, one in the front, and then there's going to be one out in the back of the development as well. Haven't started running those numbers yet, but that's pretty much what it's going to look like. With the traditional subdivision, we were able to have all the parking in front, there's no parking requirements in the subdivision rules and regs, and it'll just, it'll fit better in the neighborhood anyway. As many of Butters pointed out, there's no multifamily townhouses like that around, and this will be more of a traditional, you know, individual lots. So yeah, that's pretty much what it looks like. We're going to keep the common mailbox in the front because the United States Postal Service requires that, and yeah, so that's where we're at as of now. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Start.
Trevor, you received the comments from the city engineer building division?
Yes.
Do you want to address any of those now, or do you have a fair point?
Yeah, I think most, I spoke with Rob about the comments, and you know, some of them were just kind of pointing out like the labels that, you know, should be on the definitive plans. It's not completely necessary for the preliminary plans, so I, you know, we're going to verbally address some of those tonight. You know, length of road, I already mentioned, is nine hundred feet, and pavement width, twenty-eight feet, you know, it's simple things like that. One issue with, not an issue, but the town line is a little awkward in this location, so. Does my mouth show up, actually? Can you see my mouth?
Yes.
Okay, so the town line runs right across the rightway, so this is the actual rightway line for Templeton and Gardner, and so where the road actually intersects is technically Templeton, but Templeton doesn't have any control over Patriots Road, that's all state road anyway, so we're going to likely have to go through certain aspects with Templeton, especially for the rear lots here, so the Templeton town line comes right down here, so the rear lead lots are Templeton, so we'll have to go through, I believe it's going to be an A and R process just to create those subdivisions, and they're going to be paired with those lots for the duration of forever. And, but yeah, there's questions of, does that matter if it's actually going into Templeton? And like I said, it's a state road, so I don't believe that's going to cause any issues, but.
How will you determine that definitively, and also where lots where they spill into Templeton?
What's that?
How will you determine that definitively, that it's not a problem?
Well, we'll be in touch with Templeton and see, I mean, we might have to consult with council. Christine Tree's been working with this project, and it's just a, yeah, a clerical thing, so I can get in contact with the Mass DOT and get their guidance, but it's a very unique situation. Not many town lines go right along the front property lines of lots, so this is definitely, probably going to be a first for most people looking at it.
Okay, there's also the consideration of the parts of the lots that spill into Templeton that needs to be addressed.
Correct, so yeah, I did some research, and Christine Tree also chimed in, you know, as a preliminary response. There was a court case in two thousand and twenty-two that was specifically addressed using area in a different either zoning district or township for zoning compliance, so we have five hundred square feet that was required to be in Templeton to make some of these lots work, more or less, so, for example, this one right here has seven five hundred square feet in Gardner, and the remainder's in Templeton, but, so the ruling on the court case was that if, basically whatever the use is, if you have a use in Gardner as two-family residential, just the area in Templeton cannot be used for, that has to be a passive use. I think the Building Commissioner actually chimed in on that, yeah, so, yeah, it's just nothing in Templeton can be used as a consideration of the active use, so it's been done before, so that should be no problem, it's just all the development has to be in front.
Okay, and you don't have to address this tonight, but it should be addressed as you go forward. Roadway, drainage, and such maintenance until such time, and if the city accepts that as a street, that needs to be spelled out as well, how that will be done, when, how often, et cetera, et cetera, and you don't have to answer that tonight, but it's something to bear in mind.
Yeah, we talked in the preliminary, like an informal meeting, just to go over the plan, see if it was viable, and basically the intent is to, you know, maintain the roads and everything like that, and stormwater basins, obviously, and then if, when the city does take it over, the applicant, there's going to have to be some sort of HOA formed, and they're going to have control over maintaining the basins in this area up here, and then if the town, if the city accepts it, it will be in charge of cleaning out the catch basins.
Okay, so as long as those specifics are spelled out. One other, one other thing I noticed, I saw in the narrative that homeowners and renters was kind of used interchangeably, I don't know.
So the, it's going to be a traditional subdivision, so each individual lot is going to be, just like you would any other subdivision, you could develop it and then sell off individual lots, but the applicant has chose to, she's going to maintain all of the units and just rent them out as, so basically it's just renting out any traditional house, you buy a house anywhere, just rent it out, it's going to be that, but she's going to own the entirety of the lots, and if she wants to sell a few of them, she's well within her rights to do so, but yeah, she'd just be the sole contributor to the HOA fees in the beginning, so she'd be kind of in full control over that.
Okay, good, that clarifies that. Gentlemen of the board, I don't have any more further questions. Any questions for Mr. Fletcher? Just to overlay any input, other than what you already provided in writing?
No, one of the biggest things, and it's not, be clarified at definitive, is the narrative talks about the open space. I'm just curious as to how that will be, who will be in the title, who will be allowed to use it, it's open to the public, the residents of the development only, so there's just clarifications I'm looking for. It's a little unusual where you have a development that will be traditional lots owned by one entity, and then open space is part of that typically, unless it's an open space development, you don't end up with open space, so just, you know, making sure that's spelled out clearly, the documents are, you know, that are needed or in place. Other than that, I have no real questions.
Okay, you've made note of that.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Mr. Schwartz, please.
In the construction phase, if I read the report correctly, you implied that some of the topsoil is going to be scraped off, so you lower the steepness of the grade, and if you do that, what are you going to do with that topsoil? You're going to spread it around, move it out?
Traditionally, when that's done for, you know, like after the sites are cleared and rubbed, usually they, you know, stockpile it on-site and, you know, surround it with road control.
Who's going to ask me this story?
And yeah, use it, you know, once, you know, final grade is getting achieved, sometimes they, sometimes people do like to chuck it offsite, but that's all going to be carried out in the definitive construction sequence, and all that will be addressed at that time.
Just getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, like I said, some of these site plans, you know, we were in the process of doing definitive site plans, so there might have been a note about that just left over, but.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Chandler, so the, I know it's early, will the project be phased, will you?
I believe so, I think, you know, the large portion of the roadway is going to have to be constructed, you know, first. I'm not sure if that's going to entail going all the way to the end, or maybe just doing a temporary roundabout so that the first, you know, four or five houses can get built and continue going up, but yeah, I'm sure it's going to be, have something to do with, you know, financing aspect of it, we'll have to, you know, work out that with any lenders and see, you know, the most financial accessible way to do it is.
Just something to consider as you develop your definitive plans and so, like we did with the previous development?
Yeah, yeah, and then I believe there's, this is going to have a swift with it, and one of the category, or one of the things they want you to do is to phase out, I don't think they want any more than like a few acres developed at any given time, so we try to do that whenever a project is a little bit bigger, but obviously drainage, you know, is a large concern, getting that in first and making sure that during construction, no erosion waters going into any of the public drainage ways and all that.
Do you plan on filing anything with the Conservation Commission?
I don't believe any wetlands were located on-site, so no, not at this time, no.
Not even a request for determination?
Typically, we don't do it unless it's, you know, wetlands, like, we typically do a request for determination if we're, you know, right along a hundred-foot buffer, like right on the edge, maybe, maybe they would want that, or, you know, there's a couple other aspects where those come into play, but if there's no wetlands on-site, then I think the nearest wetland was the one that surrounds PACC down in that area, and it was like two hundred, three hundred feet away from the infiltration in the back.
On PACC land, or on?
The, yeah, hold on, let's see if one machine shows it. Yeah, you see, you see right here, this is the basin in the back here, this is the Deer Hills subdivision, and then I think this was like two hundred and fifty feet to the edge of our grade in here, so it's down kind of tucked in that, I think it's just on like that side of the road as you come in, kind of weaves in and out of it.
So there'll be plans that show that anyways when you guys submit, so.
Yeah, yeah, kind of trying to reduce the paperwork on, you know, preliminary, so.
Okay. Something we need to consider, Rob, you know, I obviously defer to you, but one of the things we need a third party review once we get to the definitive stage.
Yeah, I mean, when it gets to definitive, I'm comfortable with, this is a, it's not a real big development, yeah, it's fairly straightforward.
I guess the only other thing I have, just to remind you to pay close attention to all the requirements for definitive plan submission, that's all. There's a lot to, a lot more to, you know, pay attention, pay attention to there than there is to preliminaries.
Yeah, this development, again, you know, we had ransom numbers, and it's a little bit, you know, less traffic will be generated by this just because we cut the units by almost like thirty percent roughly, and the impervious on-site was cut by almost a third too, so it'll be, you know, a lot easier to manage the stormwater in that scenario, and yeah, I think it, you know, fits the character of the lot a little bit better, should be a little easier to build.
Mr. Chandler, if I may, to, just for the public that are here and at home, just a brief overview of the subdivision process. This is a preliminary plan, they're required, well, they're not required to submit a preliminary plan, but it's, we encourage it, and so this is the preliminary phase. The planning board has forty-five days from date of submittal, the complete package, to either approve and not approve, or approve with modifications, and that forty-five-day timeframe is up July twenty-eighth. They may choose to do so tonight, they may choose to do so later today. If they do approve, does not mean they're approving a subdivision, they're not providing a subdivision approval, they're approving the preliminary plan which allows the applicant to then proceed to a definitive plan, and at that point, once a definitive plan is submitted, then the clock starts rolling again, and the planning board has ninety days to render a decision on that definitive plan, although there can be extensions there too, if redefined by the applicant in the planning board. So that's the process, and yeah, if there's any further questions, I know, I can try to answer it. I guess now, Mr. Chandler, you can open up to the board.
Think of a preliminary plan as a sketch. The details are worked out in the definitive once that's in hand, that's if the board approves a preliminary. Now we'll move to the public portion of the meeting. I'm going to shift positions here so people aren't looking at me like that. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this preliminary site plan? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this preliminary site plan? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this preliminary site plan? Hearing none, is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this preliminary site plan? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this preliminary site plan? Matt, your name and address for the record?
Mary Schaffer, two Oakland Lane, East Templeton, I'm in a butter, and I have a small piece of Gardner land involved in this plan.
Go ahead, Matt.
The small triangle near the road, that's my property, so I have concerns about where the mailboxes and the road are going, in addition, in regard to the boundary, and I have severe case, safety concerns about the road, the placement. They have a traffic study done, but I have concerns about the way that the road rises from the west to the east, goes by my property, and gets to the location of the driveway. I've lived along there a long time, I know that there's been a fatality down near the PACC in recent years, there was a fatality on West Broadway, sort of across from the basin area, and there was also another accident in that same area that had serious injuries. Near my driveway, which is almost to the boundary there, there was a rear-end car collision, somebody tried to turn it in my driveway, and there was just a little bit further east, within eighty feet of my driveway maybe, there was a car that flipped over the guardrail, I believe it came from going west to east. So, you know, there's been at least two fatalities, and then recently, maybe last year, there was a motorcycle accident, and that was down in that basin area too. So, even though it's been a traffic study done, there's a lot of concerns about safety coming in and out of there, there's no shoulders on the road for people to have any leeway to go, there's curbs, so I do have concerns about that. And there's one traffic blinking sign that's been put up since the new houses are going to be put in, but the traffic is still pretty fast through there. And I have a concern about, before there's any tree cutting done, that, I don't know who I would ask about that, but my boundary goes along at least five of the properties on the left-hand side, and it's a lot of wooded area, and I think it's kind of hard to define where the boundaries are, and, you know, I would want to see a plan or conversation with somebody about not getting on my land by accident, and I think on the other side too, there's, you know, homeowners that might have the same concerns because it has been wooded for so long, and I didn't know if there's any, any consideration about a buffer zone between the boundaries of my property or boundaries of boundaries from the other to leave any of the vegetation instead of clearcutting everything, or a tree canopy to leave a corridor for wildlife, you know, we've got, you can hear owl, we've got fox, deer, turkeys, birds, a bear goes through the area, so to clearcut it all, you know, a tree canopy helps provide some shade, some cooling of the land, a place for the animals to still have some habitat, so that was a concern of mine.
Is there any of that the applicant's representative could address at this time?
Sure, I might have to ask you to repeat a couple of the things that you said so I can answer as much as I can. Your property is right here, comes down right here, so that, that triangle, we have conducted a survey of the area, there's actually been a couple surveys done, so we have all the points and everything like that, so prior to cutting, very likely that we'll be out there either staking out the line or flagging it up so that anybody that comes in to log it will know exactly where the property line is, and same thing on the Deer Hill roadside. And then, I'm trying to think, you had a question about the mailbox there, was that?
Yeah, mailbox and parking, and they have to have a turnaround for the postal vehicle, and I just don't want it to be encroaching on my property if it's not supposed to be, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, it's right here, the limited rating is probably going to be right here, so that's probably likely going to be a little bit of a cutting as well right in here, so you'll have a pretty decent buffer right there, I think it's about twenty-five feet, and yeah, you just have a couple parking spaces, and I think, you know, if the mail trucks want to use the cul-de-sac in the back to turn around, or if they can pull in there and turn around, yeah, the pavement's relatively wide, it's twenty-eight feet as required by zoning, so they should be able to park right there and just whip around right there, I assume, and then.
Excuse me, how wide is the road going to be?
The pavement width is twenty-eight feet, and that's required in the subdivision To put it into perspective, most other towns that I've worked in, it's usually anywhere of two twenty-two and twenty-four feet is typical, so it's a little bit wider than your typical roadway.
Is there any provision for giving a wider amount of space at the bottom for people turning in and turning out, or it looks like it just goes straight out into the road?
Yeah, the apron will be a little bit better defined on the definitive plan, I think I just did a five-foot, five-foot kind of radius attachment there, but yeah, once we get down to the definitive, that's when I go through the regulations, see what's required in the subdivision regulations, and make sure that it's adequate for those subdivision regulations. But yeah, it will, it will connect like that, though.
And also bear in mind, if we get to the definitive site plan stage, there will be another public meeting where all these details will be spelled out again and again, there'll be public commentary, so again, this is a preliminary plan, there's still a lot of details to hash out.
Trevor, what about the concern of the rear lots, the land in Templeton and that being cleared back to the property line, is that?
I mean, likely it'll only be, you know, cleared to, you know, a portion, you know, so that the units have a little bit of a backyard there, I'm sure, you know, they don't want a clear cut right to the edge of the property, I would doubt, you know, just the bare minimum to give people a little bit of active space in the backyards, and yeah, you know, screwing a buffer would be nice to keep.
Do you have to keep a, is it a fifty-foot buffer anyways, or isn't there?
I don't believe so, no, I don't think there is any.
Is there a requirement for a buffer?
Yeah, typically when you go through site plan review, that's for a commercial building, so that's usually one of fifty-foot buffers introduced to keep, you know, commercial developments fifty feet away from residential properties, but once you get into a subdivision process, the fifty-foot buffer is usually nowhere to be found, but.
Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard in opposition to this preliminary development plan? Sir, your name?
Here at Stevens Way, a butter. I have a question to add on to her about the exit. Now you have this picture, is this an accurate portrayal of where the entrance and exit is going to be?
On this plan?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, according to that, you've got a telephone pole right in the middle of your exit and entrance way.
The telephone pole is actually right here, so it's going to be right in the corner. You see that little circle right there that I'm pointing to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's where that telephone pole is, so, we stay just outside of that.
Because I would encourage the planning board to go down and see where they have the entrance and exit. It is a complete blind corner that they'll be pulling out of and pulling into. If you're coming from Gardner and want to turn into that, you cannot see anything coming over the hill around the corner, so they'll be turning, taking their chances. When you're coming from Templeton towards Gardner, if you pull out from that road, you won't, the car won't see you until they're right on you, and all the trucks, the trailer trucks, the ten-wheel dump trucks come flying around that corner, they're not going to stop in time. This is a tragic area to put an entrance and exit, that you're going to put it in a worse place, it's around the corner, over a hill, and you have to see where they're going to put it, there's no way they should have an entrance or exit anywhere near right where they have it. It is absolutely going to have fatalities one after the other because you're adding thirty-two houses up there plus their cars to try and enter and exit, not count deliveries, mail, and everything else that will come and go off that busy road, along with the trailer trucks and ten-wheel dump trucks that go up and down that road daily. You really need to see this edge exit, you will shake your head and say, no way. There's no way they can see when they pull out or pull in.
Thank you for your comments, I noted, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to be here, to be heard in opposition to this definitive site plan? Sir?
My only questions.
Your name and?
Michael Belivar, working Stevens Way.
Thank you.
So these are two- and three-bedroom apartments?
Three-bedroom duplexes.
Duplex, yeah. So how much parking is going to be available at each site?
The subdivision rules and regs require two spaces per residential, yeah.
We've got three bedrooms, so it's possible you're going to have more than, more than more than that for vehicles. What do you do with the overflow vehicles and visitors and things like that?
And there's no stipulations in, in the subdivision regulations to provide more of that, yeah.
I, I agree, there's none of what's going to happen when they shut off.
No, people will probably park, you know, on, on the street, you know, and, yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that was, that was my main concern, um, that, that's it, enough.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard in opposition to this definitive site plan?
I, I do have one more thing, it's not really an opposition, is, is everybody been notified about this, or when do they have to be notified? I know I wasn't for this one, but I imagine when you do the definitive plan, you'll notify everybody, or...
I believe everybody that was, uh, notified by certified mail, I think the, the lawyers...
I was not.
Are you a gardener or butter?
I am not a gardener.
So you won't be notified?
Even though it's a subdivision, I read the rules for the subdivision, it looks like everybody, with the rules I read, it said everybody within five-hundred feet...
Three-hundred.
Huh?
Three-hundred feet.
Three-hundred, that's supposed to be notified. It didn't say anything about the town.
Yeah, that's all the information we have, we only have information on gardener butters, and that's who we...
Is there anybody from Gardner here? Were you notified by me? Okay, all right.
Anything further from the public? Very well, gentlemen, will entertain.
Yeah, so we do have, we did have some, um, questions submitted by our resident that couldn't make the meeting.
Uh, yes, thank you for the reminder. All right, this is from an individual named Becky Copper, uh, presumed she's in a butter. Yes, she's from Deer Hill Road. Uh, she wasn't able to make the meeting, uh, she did email this into Mr. Borahguard's office, and I would like to, uh, read these and, uh, see if there's any, any input from, uh, you or, uh, the applicant. "There's generations of wildlife, like foxes, black bears, turkey, owls, deer, et cetera, that come through our yard. From the woods behind our home on a regular basis, the new development will destroy this wooded area and animal spaces, dens, nests, et cetera. Do you know the impact for wildlife, and will there be efforts made to preserve space or recognize this in the new development?"
So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to be clearing, you know, as little areas as possible, and, uh, just heard that what's required for stormwater and for the development itself, and we have about ten acres that we're, we're preserving in the back that, you know, will remain untouched, so, uh, you know, it's been taken into consideration, for sure.
Okay, her next question is, "What about noise? With sixteen new housing units added, noise is unavoidable. What if it's, what efforts will be made to address this?" And a secondary question, as part of that, will the development have a fence that goes around its perimeter?
Uh, I don't believe any fence is going to be proposed, you know, if, and, like I said, if these lots are sold one day, I mean, it would be up to the individuals that own the lots to, uh, perhaps, put a fence up, uh, but it'd be duplex, so two people would have to grieve upon the fence, but there's no fence, uh, proposed as part of this plan as far as noise, uh, just a tradit- traditional residential, uh, subdivision, so, uh, noise shouldn't be too excessive and shouldn't be too out of place for the area that it's in, uh, but, yeah, it's...
Uh, next, in relation to noise, what are the rules regarding pets at the new development? That might be a little premature.
Yeah, I, I believe it would just be, you know, animal, you know, whatever rules that Gardner has in place for animal control, uh, would be, uh, the ones that would govern, I don't think the HOA is going to be, uh, going into those details.
Uh, will the development have any impact on well water or usage on, on nearby properties?
Uh, that, no, no impact on well water, we're using municipal, um, water, we're tying in that way, so, no water's going to be pumped into the ground, uh, pumped out of the ground.
City water and sewer for this project, correct?
Correct, yes.
I thought. Uh, "Impact on property values. I'm concerned overall that by removing the wooded area behind our home, that it will significantly change our experience on the property and alter the value, not just for us, but for future property owners. We're not certain if we'll want to remain after the development has been completed." I don't know if you can speak towards influence on property values at this preliminary stage?
Can't, I don't know.
Um, privacy, this goes along with noise, uh, also bear in mind, she's on Deer Hill Road. Uh, this goes along with noise, but I want to know how much space there will be between the development and our stone fence. Uh, I don't know if number thirty-three is visible on your, on your present drawing. Um, if there's no fence for the development, will we need, will we need to install a fence, et cetera?
That one, okay. So she, I believe, is the, this lot, maybe? Um, so, I mean, the, the stone wall is, uh, is the property boundary, I think that's what she's talking about, right here.
I believe so, yeah.
It's a stone wall, so, uh, you know, the development's going to have the right to go right up to that stone wall, that is the property line, uh, like I said, want to try to give as much of a buffer to, to make the lives of people living in these units, uh, good as well, and give them privacy, so, you know, it's going to be taken into consideration, and we're going to try to, you know, uh, limit the amount of cutting as, as much as possible, and just cut the amount required for the grading around the houses and, and, uh, and for stormwater management and all that, so...
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Copper's final question is, "Are there any benefits we aren't aware of, such as walking trails, et cetera?"
So, at, at this point, um, there's no plans for, for trails or anything like that, uh, for public use, I think, uh, as of now, uh, the applicant's going to, wants to, uh, maintain ownership of the, the land out back, um, and then, details of, you know, who's able to use that would be worked out at a later date, uh, we haven't really had in-depth conversations about that, but, uh, yeah, there's no plans as of right now to, to transfer it to Gardner or anything like that.
Okay, that concludes Ms. Copper's questions, thank you. Very well, uh, I will entertain a motion to close the public meeting. Why close the public meeting first? Motion made and seconded to close the public meeting. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. By voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the public meeting is closed. The regular meeting of the Gardner Planning Board will convene at seven fifteen by the room clock. Until that time, we are in recess. Approval of minutes from our June eleventh meeting. Mr. Cormier?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as presented from the June meeting.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes from our June eleventh meeting. Any discussion? Very well, by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Item two, new business, preliminary site plan for subdivision Compass Lane. So, our options are, uh, we can approve the preliminary plan with conditions, we can reject the plan, or we can, uh, opt to hold, and we would have to take action by July twenty-eighth, because the forty-five-day clock is ticking from, uh, submission. So, what is the well and pleasure of the board? Discussion, please.
I would like to, uh, just hold off for, maybe for another meeting, we, we may, we'll look at the plan in a little more detail and maybe make a decision, that, that's only my opinion.
Will we have another meeting before July twenty-eighth?
No, we wouldn't, we would have to have a, a separate, special meeting. Just something to be aware of, and, uh, we can approve it with conditions, we have the city engineer's comments, we have, uh, the building commissioner's comments, wearing his, uh, zoning code enforcement officer hat, uh, we've have comments from the butters.
I make a motion, we approve it with conditions.
Mr. Borahguard?
Just, just for, just for clarification, you're not approving with conditions, you're approving it with modifications.
Yes.
However, I'm not sure what modifications you're going to apply to the preliminary plan, it's, um, so the comments received by the city engineer and the, the building commissioner, um, have been taken under advisement by the applicant, and they will be addressed, but I don't, I'm not really sure if they really need to be addressed at this time, but they certainly need to be addressed as part of the definitive submission. So, as the chair mentioned, you can approve with modifications, you can approve, or you just approve the plan, or you can deny the plan, but then you have to come up with the reasons why, um, um, or you can ask the applicant to extend the period out beyond the July twenty-eighth if you don't want to have another meeting this month, so, aye.
Frankly, I didn't see anything egregious that couldn't be addressed in the definitive site plan. That's, that's my opinion, so...
I agree.
Were it me, I, I would roll with it right now, and, uh, wait for the definitive site plan to come in and then begin that cycle, but that's, that's just my opinion, I'm not trying to sway the folk.
Well, the reason why, I'll tell you why I want to hold off, because a gentleman's concern and a woman's concern about the curb, I, I'm familiar with that curb, I go up there, that road both ways, three, four, five times a week. I'm aware of it, but I, I just want to drive it maybe ten more times, both ways. Make a decision, my decision, of what's good and not good, so, that's the only reason. I'm actually, I actually want, want to do that. I'm not a traffic guy, but I know what's safe and not safe, I've had my share of accidents, so I know what that's about. And I also used to ride a motorcycle, so, I, I know what a motorcyclist can do. That's the only reason. If you guys don't agree with that, fine with me.
Does the motion stand? What do you, what do you guys want to do?
Mr. Schwartz, his is a motion, I'm waiting for my motion.
No, you're, you had made that motion.
I stand by my motion.
Stand by the motion, all right.
I'll send a motion of, uh, Mr. Cormier to, uh, proceed with it.
Okay, and your traffic and roadway concerns are duly noted, we will pay particular emphasis to that in the definitive. Is that acceptable?
Fine.
Okay, very good.
It will be part of the definitive plan.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Clarify the motion.
All right, so, let's clarify the motion, uh, is to approve the definitive site plan without...
Preliminary.
Preliminary definitive. Preliminary sight plan at this time without, uh, it's not conditions, that's definitive, without any conditions right now. Modifications, without modification at this time. Is that your motion?
That's suffice.
And you concur with the second?
Second.
Very good. All right, any further discussion? All right, round the table, by voice, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, the, uh, preliminary site plan for subdivision Compass Lane is approved. Uh, coming up next on this issue, there will later be a public hearing, uh, public meeting on the definitive site plan, once that's been delivered. Good. Uh, we have no old business, you have any mop-up items for us, Mr. Borahguard?
No, sir, please.
All good, all clear, next meeting Tuesday, August thirteenth. Good with that? Sounds good. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, any discussion? By voice, please, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.